Welcome, everyone, to the June 28, 2017 Neshova Regional School Committee meeting. This is our last official, regular meeting of the FY17 school year. We're going to jump right into the agenda. Calling the meeting to order at 5:00. Any citizens' comments? No. Okay, new business. The superintendent's evaluation is not in the packet, but the evaluation was completed by the former sitting committee, per a vote of the school committee at the time. So, we're going to read through, I'm going to read through, the Massachusetts Department of Education's Model System for Educator Evaluation, so you understand how that was done, and then we'll take the highlights of it. This was done pursuant to Educator Evaluation Regulation 603 Code Massachusetts, Regs 35. 00. The model system requires the following: that all individual school committee members rate the superintendent's performance against the standards for administrative leadership. There's four standards: instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And then, the committee members all created their own individual, they were all collected up, and they were put into a summative review, which is what this document is. So, I'm going to go through the highlights. This is for Superintendent Clenchey. Thank you so much for being here for the past year. So, step one is to assess progress towards goal for professional practice, student learning, and district improvement. And the superintendent, according to the school committee collectively, met the professional practice goals, met the student learning goals, and exceeded the district improvement goals. Step two is to assess the performance on the standards, and that's where those four standards come in that I mentioned: instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community, and professional culture. And while I know she doesn't really want us to do this, we are going to read it, because I think it's important for people to understand the body of work that the superintendent undertook this year. Okay. The, before I go, one of the things that seems strange to me, but this is the way the system requires it, is that each rating is either unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary, but I want to talk about what their definition at the state level is for proficient. The proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is the rigorous, expected level of performance. So, everybody keep that in the back of your mind. Okay. For the overall rating, the school committee gave the superintendent a proficient. Again, the acknowledgement is that that's the rigorous, expected level of performance. But I want to read the comments, because I think a lot more comes out of the comments. And these comments come from the school committee members. What I did was, I took entire sections of things people wrote and massaged them together. "This year is the first year we have had a broader, deeper understanding of the intricacies of just how far-reaching the scope of effort is from the superintendent's chair. We, the public, now have access to and a deeper understanding of the internal processes, areas of need, and specifics on where our financial picture was, is, and is going. That visibility, along with a Herculean effort to clean up several serious and critical areas and operations, is due to the efforts of Superintendent Clenchey. Combine that with a healthy respect for all constituents, from students to staff to parents and town officials, and we are indeed in a position to deliver on our vision of quality, top-of-the-state education. Superintendent Clenchey's high-caliber work ethic translates into her expectations for her staff. Her compassionate, professional approach attracts like qualities in the people she hires. We have seen a marked change in the approach to their work and the way they interact for the good of the students across the district. We've been particularly impressed in the way that she's responded in the face of negative criticism. Her firm, respectful responses and handling of situations is an example for all involved. At the district level, a culture of 'don't ask questions' has been replaced with an invitation to discuss, collaborate, and come to mutual agreement. Her ability to go beyond the role of manager to leader fosters a culture our staff in three towns deserve, and one in which our students can thrive." So, that's the overall rating and comments. Then, professional practice, student learning, and district improvement were the superintendent's performance goals. She met, as I said earlier, professional practice, met the student learning goal, and exceeded in the district improvement goal. Standard one was, is instructional leadership, and the rating there is proficient. Superintendent Clenchey holds high expectations for herself and her staff, all centered on student growth. There is no misunderstanding her intentions. Even with all of the unplanned, necessary distractions that consumed in an inordinate amount of time this year, her support in curriculum development and adoption, as well as her commitment to streamlining processes for effective management systems, demonstrates her passion, experience, and expertise for student learning. She has worked diligently to ensure that next year's budget supports the district's mission while being sensitive to the availability of community resources. Refreshing, I think that was you, Jones. Refreshing the district's approach. To curriculum will take time, but thus far Superintendent Clenchey's efforts are paying off, as evidenced by the frequency and richness of discussions with her teams across the district. We are confident cascading that into each school will continue in FY18, as positive signs are already apparent. Standard two, management and operations, was exemplary. While her leadership and solution-oriented approach is evident in all she does, Superintendent Clenchey's work in the area of management and operations is exemplary. From her first day, she's demonstrated the ability to identify problems and act expediently to solve them. Her entry to the district was combined with unexpected adversity, unanticipated lack of important documentation, and incomplete or unacted upon facilities issues. She was able to rally her staff to resolve an immense number of issues, which consumed the better part of her six months at the district. That response was active, appropriate, and appreciated. Superintendent Clenchey has articulated a vision, as well as expectations, for professional behavior from all members of her central office, staff, directors, and school leaders. This year, the building principals have assumed the supervision for all head custodians, with the support and input of the facility's leadership. A new ticketing system, this is UCAB, has been implemented that is bringing about efficiencies in practice and cost. The food services unit, in collaboration with the support and efforts of the IT team, implemented a new point-of-sale system. The system was one that's widely used in school districts across the state. It can generate multiple informational reports that benefit food services employees, generate state and federal reports, track all expenditures, and general revenue. Some modules are even being used for extended days, a way to monitor finances and general registration. This year Superintendent Clenchey also collaborated with district leadership to establish norms for administrator meetings, resulting in efficient pacing, allowing time necessary to thoroughly discuss topics and come to collective decisions. Her reports that the administrative team has dealt with, wait a minute. Superintendent Clenchey reports that the administrative team has dealt with many difficult student-staff cases this year, several of which had been languishing. Every case is treated on its own merits, with the underpinning of dignity and respect for all involved in the case. Finally, Superintendent Clenchey and the interim business manager redesigned and refocused the district budget for optimal tracking, visibility, and resolving unacceptable fiscal practices. Her knowledge of state and federal laws and her familiarity with collective bargaining has been of immense benefit to the district. Almost there. Standard three is family and, I know this is painful, but it's only fair to let people hear it, and I'm zipping through it, so I apologize. Standard three is family and community engagement. It's clear that the superintendent is committed to having strong engagement with the community, family, and community stakeholders. In fact, the relationship between the superintendent and each town administrator, DPW, and police force is the strongest it has been in this school committee's memory. Communication to the families of our community has always been an area of growth for our district. While in this challenging year, the district met the requirements of two-way family engagement, more timely, regular communication about programs or incidents should be a goal for the upcoming year. As an example, the addition of social media accounts for school buildings in the district has been enjoyable for many families and receives a lot of positive feedback. We'd like to see this type of outreach occur district-wide and from the highest levels of the district. While Superintendent Clenchey is making positive contributions in our community, we encourage her to hold school leaders responsible for expeditious responses to parent inquiries. Otherwise, when requests fall to the superintendent for input and/or response, the additional time required to understand the backstories takes precious time away from district-wide work. And I know you've already started working with the school leaders on that. Standard four is professional culture. That was proficient. Superintendent Clenchey leads by example. She's always positive and relevant in the promotion of her ideas and expectations. She's consistently demonstrated a commitment to high standards with a vision to lead the district into the future. She has open lines of communication, which foster collaboration and trust within her administrative team. She values a cautious, reflective approach to leadership, and has worked diligently throughout the year to ensure that all stakeholders are aware of her vision. More important, she has listened to those stakeholders while refining and reassessing her progress towards meeting her goals. It is difficult for the school committee to see into the day-to-day activities of the superintendent. We can only judge based on outcomes. However, it is clear that her team-building skills, rallying staff around a common objective and goal, and positively impacting culture are among her strengths. We are fortunate that Superintendent Clenchey is here, as the culture of the district, that which the public may not see, was underserved. It takes time to right the ship culturally. Thankfully, that work is paying off. We're looking forward to this time next year, when we believe the Neshova Regional School District will continue its renewed positive vibe, and one of which the NEAS report identified as a need. So, given all of that, thank you so much for all of your efforts, and I don't know if anybody else has anything they'd like to add. I think, really appreciate the input from all the school committee members that worked on this document, including those who've rotated off and gone on to, like, a real life. Yay for you! But I don't know that there would be anything else I could add on this.
Just thank you. I mean, this has been an incredible year, coming off of a couple of very interesting years, but I'm just in awe of what you have accomplished and with your team, because you're the last one to say it's all you, that you've built an incredible team. And something that I noted, I happened to be here early one morning, I don't even know why, but you were just coming in, and you didn't know I was here. I think I was hiding in the closet. I heard you go into every office. "Hi, good morning."
Good morning!
"Hi, good day." And I'm going, oh, this team, it makes a difference. It just makes a difference, the vibe, the positivity, but the outcomes, the goals, the work, the indicators, I mean, it all, and I feel very fortunate to have you as a superintendent.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So, I'll just make a quick comment or two. I just want to also thank the school committee and the former members, who happened to be sitting here too tonight. I think I had said earlier, if I could take a look, and, I mean, the superintendent doesn't have that ability to gauge, but if I could gauge and give us a rating, it really would be exemplary, because I think that together, it has been a team, like, this has been a team. You know, when I take a look at all the work that you've done with policy, you know, all the work that we've done in the fiscal area, all the work we've done with teaching and learning, although I always apologize, sometimes you don't get as much of my time, but when I take a look at all the work that we have done collectively, it has been, I think, a banner year. I really do, I feel really good. When I walk out of here right now, I look back and say, "We had an amazing year." The things that we came into, you know what, they just ended up being a honey-do list, a checklist for us to go through and say, "Yep, did that, yep, did that, yep, did that." And so, it feels very, very good. I'm very proud of my staff, and I appreciate the fact that that came up, but I'm also very proud of this school committee, because I think collectively, we've led, and I think we've shown leadership with courage, and I'm very, very proud of us as a team. So, I thank all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I just have one question. Will this get posted to the district website?
Nope, it will not. It does not need to.
Okay, I'm just, okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Although it is a public document, but we're not, we never have posted it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing? Okay. With that, we are going to retire into executive session. If someone would like to make a motion to discuss the negotiating strategy for the superintendent's contract, and we will, say it again? Oh, would you like to? Would you like to make your statement now, before we do that?
I would like to. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Lita. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Commissioner Chester. It was, it's difficult to know exactly how to even go forward in terms of what to put out there or what to say. It was unexpected. I was privy to a lot of information that I know public wasn't, and so, it wasn't a shock to me, as much as it was a shock to others. This was a man to me who was a friend, a mentor, a leader, a thought partner, and he and I could, I think our ability to agree to disagree was bar none, one of the best I've ever had. Philosophically, he and I could sit and go around at a table, we could still walk away and go over to Dunkin' Donuts and have coffee. This was just such a genuine, authentic man, and to see him pass so early, at 65, and Alina and I were talking the other day, this is a man who couldn't enjoy retirement, couldn't, just couldn't get over that finish line, and it's just, it's just so profoundly sad for me. I am so grateful for the opportunity that he afforded me to work with him and be part of that top-level administrative team. He was simply amazing, and I was truly a benefactor from his leadership and his mentorship, and I just want to put that out there. The condolences, the sympathy that I feel for his wife and his family. His youngest just graduated from high school last year, Nicholas, so, I mean, he had a young family still, and it's just, it's just so, so sad, but we will miss him. I remember saying in an email to him just a couple of weeks ago, we were corresponding back and forth, I said, "You've got a really strong team below you. They will rise. They will rise and continue the work." So, our thought goes out to his family, and I just want to express my appreciation for being able to work with a man who was just an incredible individual. So, thank you for that time.
You're welcome. So, I don't know if the general public knows that Superintendent Clenchey came to us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. She left there last year to come be our superintendent, so your thoughts and comments are certainly appreciated, and I think, you know, the entire state, probably many more states beyond Massachusetts, probably share in a lot of the comments that you made, so thank you for that. All righty. So, would someone like to make a motion to go into executive session? To, okay, so how about this? Let me help you out. If no one wants to.
I'll move it.
Okay.
I move that we convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy for superintendent's contract, to reconvene into open session.
Second.
Mark seconded it. Thank you. Susan?
I.
Yes. Ann. Elise, I'm sorry, I almost called you Ann. Elise, yes. Lorraine, yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
And we need our, I need teaching and learning. Are they still down the hall there?
Yeah.
For the district improvement? Did somebody get them?
Okay, we're back. Thank you. Mark, I need to come. We need to vote on the superintendent's FY salary.
Let's see.
So, the school committee just went into executive session to discuss the superintendent's
Immediately needed to, because we'll be voting to do the notes. Are we?
You're being recorded.
I am.
Okay.
Oh, okay, that's, oh, I get it now.
Okay.
I'm good.
So, yes, so we just came out of executive session. We discussed the superintendent's salary recommendation from the Personnel Subcommittee, and the school committee has made its decision, and that decision was unanimously to provide an increase of 5% to the superintendent's current salary for the upcoming fiscal year. Because it was a unanimous decision, I'm going to open up the floor for anyone in the school committee who would like to make a statement as to why they believe. Kathy?
I want to just reiterate that this is not a cost-effective increase, and that the work that the school committee did last year to reformat, revise, non-union contracts, took a strong look at some of the things that were going into the contracts, and we eliminated things like longevity, and some of the unlimited reimbursements for professional development. And one of the things that we wanted to be clear about, for the non-union contracts, that any salary increases would be merit increases. And so, this reflects a merit increase. I mean, we just went through Brooke's evaluation, and, you know, Lorraine read what we wrote, but those of us who live it day-to-day, and who've really been paying attention, and the public know that there was so much more than that, and this district is a new place. I think it's a better place than it was a year ago, and that's thanks to Brooke. So, I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that, that I want it to be recognized that this is a merit increase, and that Brooke has the discretion with the other non-union positions to provide them with merit increases. And I think that's an important statement to make, and I also think it's an important direction to go in, because we set the bar high, and we want to support people in meeting those high standards. And we have the person at the top who has done that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mark?
Sure. I'd like to just say that overall, your evaluation is proficient and exemplary in some areas, and that I think your proficiency is outstanding in many areas, and your effort this year has been outstanding and extremely satisfactory to all of us in many areas, and that it's just much appreciated by me and I think all the members of the committee.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you. So, unless someone else has anything else to add, I'm going to have to ask for a motion.
I wish that we increased Superintendent Clenchey's salary by 5% for FY18.
I'm a second.
Second.
Steve, thank you. And any other conversation? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. It's my pleasure. I love being here.
Good. Keep that in mind.
My staff knows.
Okay. We're moving on to the Neshova Regional High School Facility Advisory Committee. This is a new subcommittee for us, and it's an advisory committee. We talked about it a couple of times, tried to get this charge down, the charge is now down, from the school committee's perspective, but it truly is something that needs to be driven from the administration, because it impacts our school building, and yay, finally, yay, Neshova! We're finally turning our attention, instead of pretending it doesn't matter, to decide what are we going to do with the high school or not do consciously, rather than just keep pushing it to the background. So, I turn this over to you.
Sure, thank you. So, what we've done is, I drafted an advertisement that we're going to put in several places. I'm going to just read a bit of it to you, to give you a flavor of it, but I know that I've distributed it earlier to you. The Neshova Regional High School, which was built in 1961, is being evaluated to address outdated and problematic deficiencies in both the physical building and its systems for possible renovation or replacement. The superintendent of schools is asking for volunteers to study and make recommendations to the NRSD School Committee as to whether or not the district should further pursue a statement of interest, which we commonly refer to as an SOI process, with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It is anticipated that this recommendation will be made in the early fall of 2017, so shortly after we get back from our summer. The work of this committee will also include appropriate outreach to our three communities, which will include a position on whether to pursue further with MSBA, the costs, and timelines. Committee members must be residents of the towns of Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe, and be able and willing to commit to a varied schedule of meetings and to fully participate in those meetings. Knowledge of construction or facilities management would be an asset, though it's not required. What we've done is asked for applications or statements of interest from individuals to be sent to us, no later than August 16th. And in part, that's a little bit later than we wanted to, because our newspapers are actually a bit on hiatus, summer hiatus right now, too, so we have to wait until everybody's back and able to advertise this. So, this will go to the three papers. We'll also post it online. We'll do a scroll across, and so you'll see it come there as well, and of course, we're putting it out there right now tonight.
And the list serves at the towns.
And the list serves at the towns. It'll sell something out to the towns tomorrow as well, so. So, I think we're set to go on this, and so, unless there's anything else on this, we'll be sending this along tomorrow.
Kathy?
Sir.
Is there selection criteria?
So, the superintendent's going to be determining.
Right. And actually, thank you for asking that question. I had a great discussion the other day with Mass School Building Authority, and, you know, although this is not a building committee, they said you might want to keep that in mind, that it would be nice if there was a nucleus here that could kind of help to move forward if you decide to go that route. So, it's just something to kind of keep in the back of your mind. But I'm very excited to even get to this part, and a lot of the work, too, that they're going to do is go back and reflect, Mark, on the work that your committee has done as well, the committee that you sat on previously, so.
And, Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, because we're starting later than we hoped and wished, that early fall is a target time, maybe optimistic, and I wonder if we should be thinking about by the end of fall, or something like that.
When you think about what this group is doing, there's already a full report from the task force, which identifies, and it's really looking at that, we kind of all had this conversation this past year, right, where we wanted to be, but it's important to bring community members in to say, "What do you guys think?" Look at that work, and really kind of get out and socialize it, because even if the school committee decides to go or to not go, well, if we decide not to go with the SOI, then that's it, but if we decide to go with the SOI and move forward with it, it still has to go to the communities for a vote. So, we need to get people, we can't, it can't just be us talking about this to understand what's the scope of it, and I think if we keep it narrow enough just for the SOI, without letting it become this mushroom cloud, I think we'll get a better understanding, so.
And I think, too, Mark, you raise a valid point. I think if we get to a point where we say, "You know what, we're not going to hit this kind of timeline," I think if we just come back and say, "You know what, we need a little bit more time," and I don't think you're going to have any problems getting us that time.
Right. So, let's see how it goes.
Okay, good enough. Thank you, then. We'll work tomorrow to get this posted.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The district improvement plan.
District improvement plan. I'm going to ask both Patty and Martina to come up, just really quickly, and just to kind of let them know, and although we've had this discussion, we did do a debrief of this after we had our last workshop and worked through it. You had brought forward a couple of suggestions at that workshop that I brought back to Patty and Martina. Some of the things that you actually had on there, we actually felt were already in here, but then we made a couple of changes and such, and Steve's found a couple of other little typos that we'll go back and fix as well. So, these really are the ladies, they and Cindy Larson, in collaboration with myself, is really, this was the power group that was behind this district improvement plan. So, if you have any questions or comments, and Martina and Patty, I don't know if you want to maybe give a comment or two before we turn it over to the school committee about the work that you've got here in front of you.
I guess I'm not sure what conversations have taken place.
Yeah, because we don't need to read it, they already know this, so just a couple of, one or two salient points is all we're looking for.
I think we just really tried to design this with the students in mind, so you'll see that while there are a lot of other pieces of work that, as a district, were undertaking, we felt that the district improvement plan as a, as a set of goals would really focus there, so I think you'll see that in overall the purpose.
And I just want to clarify, this district improvement plan is the full district, pre-K through?
Yes.
12.
Yes.
Okay.
It's intended to be a pre-K to 12.
Okay. Patty, any comments from you or thoughts?
Just very briefly, the plan is based on data, so looking at MCAS data, looking at the UFRS survey, and any type of data that is informing us that these are areas we need to think about and work on. That was really the genesis for it.
Perfect, thanks. Thank you. The school committee, any questions, any further questions?
The school committee, any questions, any further questions that you might have?
I do. So of the bullets, so we had a workshop last week and there were a lot of suggestions that came out of the workshop for our goals. And oh, by the way, school committee, we will be picking that up again in the fall. So more to come. Because we don't have our goals done, and you can't expect them to get done in one session. But one of the things that we noticed is a lot of the things that we were putting down as goals for the school committee, actually, and Dorothy Presser, who is our MSC rep who worked with us, was all excited after the meeting and said, you guys, you got it. You guys got it. For all these years, you got it. Because there were several things that we had indicated that really do belong in the district improvement plan under the superintendent's purview and then oversight from the school committee versus the school committee taking them on. So I sent the list to Brooke, and then she must have worked with you on it, but could you identify for us, if you can remember, what were the extra points that you ended up putting in? Because I know that you said some of them that were already in here, and I noticed that too. I don't think we probably hadn't had a chance to review it, but.
Well, for example, the K, I think K was in there, but we'd already had K on our radar already on here. So we didn't add that because we knew that it was already on there and we knew that the work had to be done, both K and pre-K. So that's something that we didn't add, but it was on your list. I think there was some digital literacy that we added in there that was on there that we felt we could nicely duck down.
So Martina, I want to ask you about that because digital literacy is a hot button for us, big, big, big time. So can you just, because I can't compare one to the other, can you tell us where that is and what that is?
Yeah. So I'm just looking for the exact wording, but there's a piece under digital literacy in goal one, but the most obvious place where you'll find it should be under goal three curriculum. So the last benchmark.
A lot of benchmark. You'll see it there.
So basically, as you know, as a district, we've undertaken a one-to-one initiative as the sort of first base for supporting the updated digital literacy standard frameworks that have now been released. And so part of our effort is just to continue to work with all teachers to ensure that students are really using the technology they have to enhance their own learning. And then secondarily, Cindy Larson is actually taking on some work to work, some K to 12 work to, with the instructional technology specialists and then our computer science teachers at the high school to really align that end of the digital literacy units and frameworks.
The science frameworks came up first and then the digital literacy. But again, the digital literacy was the last thing, the science was the last thing I signed off on before I left the State Department. So that was done during my time period there. But we've really not paid attention to the digital literacy frameworks and standards. So that's why it's in under the curriculum, just to provide that context.
I'm going to represent a member who's not here. I mean, I just, I can hear him in my head. And I think it's because, I think I know you do, I do, I know you do, several of us believe it as well, that the digital literacy piece not be just an implement, that it be an enabler to differentiated learning in a meaningful way. Actually, Neil, those are my words. But I think it's the sentiment around the table. And so we're going to be looking to see how is that happening? Where is that happening? Illustrative examples of how, you know, students who are in these plus classes are, what are they doing? Instead of just, you know, being put in a classroom with an online class, like that's not, that's not an enabler. That's not a good experience. Or just teaching the kids how to use the laptop. It's how is, how are the kids using it? Because teachers now know how to use it as a tool to enable the learning, not just the access.
And we're excited that we have the frameworks to sort of more formally guide that. You know, it's something we've been working toward anyway, but this really just helps us.
This helps us, the frameworks.
And to share sort of what should happen at each grade.
So that's wonderful to hear. So one of the things, next year when we do our monthly, bring, you know, folks in from the schools, I would love for these ladies to come in, professionals to come in and illustrate that with some of the students instead of some of the softer, like the softer things are nice, but we really need to see the concrete. And I know it won't happen for a little bit, but we would love to invite you in to show us your work.
I'm just thinking too, because, you know, we did this at our workshop, but I want to mention to the public that we've created three documents here. We have a pamphlet that's got the soundbites, and we've modeled the work that we've done after the state because the state has standards first that are the bare minimums that teachers need to use for teaching their courses. There's underneath that is a frameworks that helps to push it, and underneath that is the curriculum that we do at this level. So we've taken the same approach. We have the pamphlet, which is basically the soundbites, the bare minimum. We've got another document that has a little bit more information in it, and then we are creating, in the process of creating, the third document that has some of the things you're talking about in it. But that document is intended more for the teachers, the staff, as opposed to these, which are more user-friendly for our public.
So this is our roadmap. This is your roadmap, and then the how you're going to do it. This is what you're doing and the how you guys have, and we respectfully leave that there. Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Steve?
Yes. To me, the term expected benchmarks is kind of really weird. I think just the term benchmarks, because this is how we're going to be measuring. These are not, in other words, these are not suggested benchmarks that may happen. These are the benchmarks we're going to be judged upon. And therefore, I think the word expected doesn't belong there.
So your target benchmarks. Makes sense.
Well, benchmarks are targets.
Right.
So just keep it.
Get rid of the word expected. That'll keep me in.
Whatever. It's her document, so I think the discussion needs to occur because it's her document.
Okay. We'll talk about this offline then. Thank you. Great suggestion.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So thanks for, does anybody else have any questions?
It's looks.
It's court.
Presentation is wonderful. It's focused. It's clear. And one of the things that I would hear from teachers in the community when the district improvement plan would come out is initiative overload is the polite term for it. But this is stuff that people are doing that they can get, it's just wonderful.
Thank you. And I think that that's one of the things, when we talked about this time, and again, we said we want to put in what we're really doing.
Yes.
And one year, and saying, this is exactly what we're doing right now. We will have these prepared for every staff member when they come in on the first day back.
But we all need to be able to articulate, what are you doing this year? Everyone needs to be able to articulate it, from the staff up and even the school committee. So thank you very much for your efforts. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. I think we need a vote on the district improvement plan. So if someone would like to make a motion?
I move that we vote to accept the district improvement plan as presented in the minute.
And a second for Mark? Thank you. All those questions? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you for your efforts. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. So that's the K through eight, high-level, 30,000-foot view, right?
It's really K to 12.
I mean, I meant K-12 because I'm from Bolton, so I'm sorry.
And a pre-K, yes, because pre-K's in there too. So it's really pre-K to 12.
But so what you would have said to me was, as you were going through that work, the next item on the agenda is yours. I'd like you to talk about it, not me.
Sure. Thank you. So I sent a little note around to you, and I just want to reiterate that. I apologize for that. But whenever you have a shift in administration, like we have at the high school right now, it provides a beautiful opportunity for a superintendent to dig deeper than you would normally dig. And you have the opportunity to go into classrooms, for example, I mean, even taking my key around and going into every single classroom. Normally, you don't do that. But when you've got a shift, you have that opportunity to say, you know what, this is a great time to look fresh lens at everything. The building, how the classrooms are being used, to the infrastructure of your administrative team. It gives you the chance to kind of openly say, you know what, this was tried, but I think we can look at this now because this might take us down a different path. So it creates a lot of opportunity for a superintendent to come in and have a fresh look, and I capitalized on that this time. So one of the things that I found through the process is I had the opportunity to speak with many different people, but I did hone in on our department chairs because they really see themselves as the middle management, and I do too. But they can only do so many things. Their contract only allows them to do certain things, and then it's my job to kind of go in and say, okay, so where are the holes? What are things that I can make a move in right now to help support, and we can kind of move this down a different pathway? So some key things, some salient issues or concerns or themes, if you will, kept coming back up. Curriculum was one of those themes. And, you know, it was everything from the vertical and the horizontal alignment just isn't there to, you know, I don't feel, I don't feel that inspiration about the curriculum or I need extra help with it, or I need some ideas that I could take to my staff or my department. And those are just some areas that we feel we're missing right now. So curriculum was a key theme. Discipline came up, but discipline came up from, our current administration has just tapped out with the amount of work that they've got right now. And we feel that if we could pull some of that back from them, that there could be a natural focus on the discipline and culture within the school. So that was another idea that they had, is there any way that we could rethink this? Educator evaluation was the other really critical piece that came up. And so that allowed me to go into, again, some different places to look at different things. I would suggest a couple of things because I've brought educator evaluation up before around this table. When the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education put out the guidelines and said, this is like a gold standard, it didn't mean that every district had to adopt 100% of that. And it was encouraged, if you were a superintendent at that point in time, taking in some of those workshops, it was encouraged that you take out some of the key salient pieces and keep them contemporary with what your district's needs were. So you might have this little piece over here one year, but maybe in about three or four years, you might look a little differently at it and bring in some other pieces that you weren't using over here, or swap them out. But the whole notion was to keep it ever-evolving and a living process, a living document. Somewhere, that didn't happen here. And so what happened was 100% of everything was adopted, and it's just too big. And so we've had ongoing discussions all year, and Marie has been helping to spearhead that, working with, we have a group that's already in play of union members, and Ross Mulcarren and Laura Friend are our key administrators on that. And we've tried very hard this year. We didn't get where we wanted to go, but I think, as I approached this, you need to know that that was in the back of my mind, that that's still presenting issues for us that we can't seem to move beyond. So we need to streamline it, we need to look differently at it, and this is as good a time as any to do that. So with all of that in place, then you've got that philosophical piece, then I've also got the reality of I'm looking at evaluations that aren't being done or can't get done. Or I've got administrators that are saying, I'm so far behind and I can't seem to catch up, you know? Or another one texting me while they were on the bus to Washington DC saying, I'm trying to get these evaluations done. I think I could get one or two more done before we get to Washington. And you say, wait a minute, this is just so not where this should be. Because then the other side of me as the leader is saying, are these being done the way that they should be done? And is the authenticity there that we need? So educator evaluation, and I think really, when we take a look at the high school, that should be our flagship. That school should be the flagship, whether it's educator evaluation, whether it's curriculum and vertical and horizontal alignment, whether it's discipline, whether it's culture. I really believe outside of this district improvement plan that we need to put a light on that high school next year. So with that, I started to think broader on it and started to have some good discussion, rich discussion with people. Then I brought everybody in, the department chairs all together, and said, I've got this idea. I want to run this idea past you. And then I've run it past several of you. I ran it past a personnel subcommittee, I think in three meetings, maybe two, three, four meetings, and said, this is what I'm thinking, and now I'm presenting this tonight, saying, okay, I'd really like to see this position supported. The notion would be an assistant principal for academics. I've also had this discussion with our teaching and learning friends as well because I see that this position would tie in nicely with that unit as well, particularly in terms of curriculum. So I sent something around to you saying, this is what I'm thinking about. There are commonalities that I leaned when I spoke with the staff, the notion of curriculum guidance and better facilitation and direction were cited as areas of need. I see this position as doing that kind of thing. With regards to the educator evaluation, I think back to this whole process, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say it's about six years in the making. Because I can remember where I was when this first started to come down the pike. And I remember Mike Long saying, if you recall, from, Mike Long is the legal counsel for MAS, and he said, you know what I see coming? And this is again, as superintendents, and I was sitting at the Worcester County Roundtable, said, school districts are going to have to start to hire people that are going to have to help to oversee it because it's too big for your general administrators to take care of if they're going to do it well. And I think that we can do this well. I think that we've got the interest, the desire, the drive, and I think we've got people in place, with the exception of this, that I think can drive this to be a stellar process for us. So I put forward tonight the notion of an additional assistant principal to be housed on-site at the Neshova Regional High School. This comes with the support of our teaching and learning friends, our department chairs, the administrators there. So I don't come to you tonight with a notion that this is just something whimsical that's out there. There's been a lot of work, a lot of discussion, including union discussion. I went to our union and had discussion with them and said, this is what I'm thinking. So all of that together brings me here tonight to say, I'd really like to push forward with this particular position, and I'm certainly open to any questions or comments or concerns.
So before we take questions, I want to clarify, I need you to clarify for people, educator evaluation, is it a requirement of the state? So that's gotten lost in the translation with all this discussion.
It has. It was introduced in 2010. The race to the top schools, some of it implemented in 2012, and full implementation was scheduled for 2013. So that's four years.
So the reason I bring that up is because I remember when Nicole Oderkirk was here, she and I were, we were brought into a grievance regarding that. Whole educator evaluator thing, and we didn't even know what was going on, and that was like three years ago. And so my question is, if the association, Teachers Association, is in support of this, if you're in support of this, you know, I like everything you said, and I had kids up at the high school, and I've been up at the high school, and we have so much rich expertise up at the high school, but hanging it all together, it's not like a, you know, a pretty new dress, right? You've got pieces of fabric all over the place. The one thing that I'm concerned about is that it's outside of the budget. So this kind of came up once the budget, and I think we need to acknowledge that as a group, and we need to have that discussion. That doesn't mean I don't support it, but I think we need to have that discussion.
And I would also go back, because I am so frugal as well with our budget, you know, you need to know that I don't come to you tonight with this without having thought that through extensively, you know? Because it is something that does, it is a bit of an outlier there. If I didn't feel that there was a real need, I absolutely wouldn't be bringing this forward to you because I am too frugal, to be honest with you.
Okay. Questions?
I'm long on top of the budget. We will be having a transfer at some point in the year to cover this, so that's a known thing. It would be my preference we do it sooner. It would be my preference we do it sooner rather than at the end of the year.
At the end of the school year?
No, he's saying sooner, like mid-year type thing.
Oh, sure.
So, I would hope that at the time that we do our next consolidated transfer, which I know we will have at least one during this year because we have a contract that we will, we hope to settle, that we would include.
That's a great idea.
Transfer it at that point as well to bring the budget into accord with what we actually know our program to be.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Questions? Susan?
Yeah.
You got it, it's okay.
I've been thinking a lot about it this afternoon, given the situation that Lancaster is in. You know, and I remember you saying that if you'd gone any deeper into the budget, then that would have meant making cuts. And so, I'm kind of, it's hard to reconcile shifting from another place if, so then that must mean.
Yeah. You're right. What it means is something's going to be lost somewhere else. You're right on that, no matter how you look at it, because you've got this finite amount of money.
Right.
And you're absolutely right, so it's going to have to come out of somewhere else.
And I do recognize that, you know, an effective administration is, you know, a teacher's best friend, and then it obviously helps to student learning in the end, right? But I wonder if after the new principal's first year, you know, if waiting and putting it into next year's budget and having them, I'm sure you've met, you know, and discussed it with him.
Yeah, absolutely.
But having him see things in action and then making, you know?
Yeah. And just to follow up to, you're absolutely right. He and I have had multiple discussions about this position. In fact, he asked if I wanted him to come this evening and to your last workshop. And he said, no, it's okay, we're good, you know? But certainly, it's a position he supports right now. I understand your thinking, and I'm not disagreeing with it.
My point of view is personal because of my experience with the high school and that this type of a position was needed when I was there, and I left in 2003. There is just so much, and I'm a curriculum person, but it's hard to do that work when there are so many other competing needs and you're pulled in so many directions. And even, and that predates the new evaluation system, the old one was much different, but it was so hard to get it done. But the most important thing, one of the most important things a principal can do is be the instructional educational leader. And it's so hard to do it on your own when you've got a school of 1,000 kids and there's discipline and there's also, not just discipline, but there are other things too. I think that if we can do this, it will help tremendously to advance. I mean, we have the school improvement plan goals. With the right person, I think it'll help advance those goals. And then the other thing that I'm thinking about is last year or the year before when we were talking about a proposal to reorganize the central office leadership. And there were those of us and people in the office who could see the need to change, and people saying, well, wait, wait till the new superintendent comes and she needs it, she needs it now, or he, we need to. So, I guess that in light of that, I get the thing about it being outside of the budget. I get, I mean, I live in Lancaster too, but I see this need, and it's been needed for a long, long time.
And that's just, if it's been needed for a long time, I'm just questioning why maybe it wasn't included in.
And I think a lot of that, you know, I've thought a lot about this, and I don't need to cut you off, so if you have more, please finish. Why, if there are deficiencies in the structure, in the district structure? Because there have been deficiencies in the district structure. And I don't say that for any other reason than if you look at where we are today and are we structured today to go forward? I don't know that we were. In fact, I don't believe that we were. And we weren't. I have kids in the system. We weren't. But I remember Kurt Bates when he came in, and I remember saying, I just feel like this district has every ingredient to make the, like, the blue ribbon cake. And we're good, but like, I just feel like we could be like there. And he said, you're right, you're right, but your demographics in your town are a, what's the word I want to use? It will drive a certain amount of success in the students. And I do believe that because as parents of kids in the district, you know, you're focused on your kids, you'll get them what they need, at least some of us are. I mean, many of us are, and everyone's doing the best that they can. But I think my point is, it's time for the district, and especially at the high school, to step, to take that next step, that you know all that talent is there, but it's not structured. And I hear what you're saying about, geez, you know, Lancaster's in a bind, you know, in four years Bolton could be there too. And that scares me, just not just as a Bolton resident, as, you know, in a Shover family. But I feel like we need to, and, you know, I'm going to interrupt myself and go back, remember that stack of documents that Brooke brought forward with all the classes at the high school, the number of students? And someone needs to dig into every single class and look at, is this class a class that we've just been kind of bringing forward for 30 years? Is it an effective class? Is it a contemporary class? Is it well, are kids taking the class? Should we be looking at something else? And that's why this position, to me, needs to deliver that. Like, is the curriculum reflective? Because I'm not sure that it is. So, that's just, and I'm not an educator.
And I think to Kathy's point too, if I can just mention, one of the department chairs said, I've been here for 17 years, and we've not been able to move the dial. I feel this will help us move the dial.
But because it's outside of the budget, because it's another expense, you're going to have to make some tough decisions on how you're going to fund this.
Yeah. And in sitting in finance, in one particular finance committee meeting in Lancaster, I mean, they led with us to look closer, and we pledged to them that this was as tight as it could get. And so, I don't know that I can.
So, I want to be cautious. This is still tight, like, please.
Oh, no.
To your point, this is more about what else are we going to do without, or what are we going to cut away at to do? So, and.
But could those other cuts have been made, you know, to have a smaller increase, is what they would come back and say, I'm sure.
But I think, in all fairness to the work that was done this past year, and this isn't against you or Lancaster.
I think it's a great idea. I really do. I just wish it was.
But I really believe that the work that was done in the budget this year, where we were going to be, and not like pretend be, where we were going to be. Was way more than where we landed, to the credit of the finance subcommittee working with Pat and Superintendent Clancy. I'm worried, the reason that I'm here is for this, but that's it. Like, I can't do off-budget, I can't do it. It just doesn't feel right. So, you're going to have to do some horse trading.
And I wonder if the new principal would, you know, it sounds like, you know, and I'm not so naive to think that this is like easily done, but course evaluation seems like it would fall under department head, and you're saying that it hasn't been happening. So, I wonder if the new principal would have some sort of, a plan that, you know, to get them to work more.
I think that they feel scattered. I think that's in part.
The department heads?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, like, maybe he would have a plan to bring it together and to kind of.
I would want to know what, if you're saying, you know, that whatever it was, 17 years, and the needle hasn't moved, you know, what are the big roadblocks? And is it, you know, the siloing of department heads that they feel like they're not crossing, you know, and communicating with each other? And like Susan said, is that something that the principal can address? But certainly, if we, you know, if we're talking about bringing in a new person, then that would be something that I would really want to see, that they have a solid background in, like, implementation and, you know, breaking down silos and building these kinds of bridges and partnerships, because that seems like what's maybe been missing, that people are.
In part, but I think another bigger part for me is looking for somebody with content, content specialization, because that's the other thing that the department chairs are looking for, is somebody with rich content specialization. And that would also be what the union would be looking for.
So, what is the roadblock that they're articulating if something's been happening for such a long time and the needle's not moving? Is it just a number of things, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I think it's just a myriad of factors, yeah. I think there's.
Well, there's these things that you said, you know?
These are the key themes, the key areas of focus that particularly the department chairs feel need to be the focus for next year.
I'm going to say something, hopefully it's okay.
You can say whatever you want.
Well, almost whatever. When I was there, there were a lot of budget cuts that needed to be made, and they all came out of the high school. And so, there were years when there were no department heads, it was the principal and the two assistants. And then, so, it's hard when your staff is cut up like that. The other thing, and this is reflected in the N.A.A.S.C. evaluation report, is the involvement of the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, in the things that should be the day-to-day management running of the high school. And that was something that was cited, and we were almost placed on warning for it. So, you look at that, an amount of time that that situation existed, we're emerging from that. And I recall Kurt, when he came in and started, you know, Brooke talks about peeling away the onion, started peeling and the need to have leadership. I mean, you had the people in teaching and learning, but they had no ear. And now you have the principal and the assistants, you know, qualified to do certainly the work that needs to be done, but the work keeps changing and people keep shifting. So, the dial hasn't moved. That's just sort of a historical context. And now we're in a position to have an aha moment and say, and I want to point out that in the last year, there've been a number of things that we found out that we needed to do, that we hadn't planned on, that we had to find money in the budget, because things popped up, we had to fix things. And this is a, this is a good thing. And so, I will support the acquisition of this position.
Thank you. I just want to go back after one of your points because I think that that's a critical point. When you take a look, and when I look back over 17 years, because I can do that, I mean, where we were 17 years ago and the expectations of your administrative team right now, there is no comparison. And the number of state and federal mandates that have come down, even in the last, well, six years, especially since Race to the Top.
It's very timely.
I mean, especially since that era. It's just unbelievable. So, we can't even compare what administrative, administration's role now is compared to seven years ago. It's so different.
Mark?
Just a question from my benefit. In the high school, who are the people who evaluate teachers now? And how, what would be the coordinating thing that happens consequently?
Only three.
So, see, the principal and the two vice principals, and that's it?
So, that's a good question. So, what is entailed in an evaluation?
Goodness. That would take a whole evening to go through to explain honestly.
I think what we're, I'm looking for is the scope, because my understanding is, it's not just you write someone's evaluation, it's observations, a number of observations.
Actually, you know, Patty, maybe you or Martina could give a quicker snapshot than I would, because I'll be too lengthy.
You can just add.
All right, go ahead.
So, for the most part, teachers undergo a two-year evaluation process for the most part. And during that time, teachers and other staff. During that time, whoever's doing the evaluation, the assistant principal and principal together, will do between three and five walkthroughs of the classroom, after which, after each of which they do a write-up of some kind to sort of document what they've seen and provide feedback. On top of that, at the end of each year, there's an evaluation of some kind of formative in the first year, summative in the second year. On top of that, there's also a very lengthy planned observation where the teacher submits a lesson plan of some kind, the evaluator observes that lesson, and then provides a very detailed set of feedback. And then, to the discretion of the evaluator, they have to, they may choose to do additional walkthroughs and observations depending on kind of what they've seen and if they're missing any evidence. On top of that, teachers, our staff is required to submit a body of evidence to support the fact that they're meeting the many, many indicators that are currently part of our evaluation process, and the evaluator is responsible for really looking in detail at each one of those.
How many indicators are there, like, just both parts?
I actually have no idea.
I want to say 40.
20 something.
Yep. The four standards would be indicators inside of that.
It feels like 30.
Yeah. It's the same. My understanding, there does not need to be that many indicators.
That's the point.
And that you don't need to do a formal observation each year.
No, it's one for two years.
One for two years.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be planned, so there doesn't have to be a review of lessons.
That has to be planned.
Yeah. But what we're saying, again, is that we took all of those guidelines, right? And so, we're doing all that. And keep in mind too, that it's not just teachers that we're doing evaluations of either. So, you know, you've got your custodians, your secretarial, your, anybody that's in that building, right? So, we're focusing right now on teachers, but.
How extensive is the write-up for the walkthrough?
So, the walkthrough is definitely shorter than the formal observation, but there's still at least three components to the form that we currently use, again, to gather evidence.
Isn't it, is that formed from DESI, or is that a form that was generated by DESI?
It was a form that was adopted by the evaluation committee. So, I really.
I'm like, they've done DESI from some stage. I couldn't agree with you more.
And I wonder if that's not some.
And, but this is exactly what we're talking about. Anne Marie has been meeting with Ross and Laura and that very committee that she's, actually, you guys, you both sit on that very often, so.
So, what's the impact of this on the department head role? We've got how many department heads?
10.
That's a lot of department heads. So, what's the impact of this role on that function?
Well, in essence, this role would kind of corral them all, and as you were talking about making a team, building a team, this person would help to oversee the process of the educator eval, would keep it on target, make sure that things are done in a timely fashion, and take on a series of evaluations as well. So, it would be expected that that person would do, let's say, 20 evaluations, for example, 20 individuals. And so, you have all that. Then you also have all the curriculum. Don't forget, the eval, any eval is not the driving factor here, it's a piece of the work, right? The curriculum piece is the other piece of work. The late starts, for example, they would also help to oversee all of the PD that's happening with the late starts. So, this all ties into all of the work that the department chairs. And so, it's really somebody who would help to oversee, support, facilitate, guide those department chairs.
And so, the work that this position would be performing is being done by who right now?
My concern is that a lot of this work is not being done right now.
Okay.
That's just the reality.
And how does this position differ from the existing vice principal positions? And then, how does this position differ from what the principal, principal's role is?
So, right now, as I see it, you'd run, the two principals, the two assistant principals that are currently there right now would focus primarily on the day-to-day operations, whether that's the custodial, the secretarial, the discipline, the culture, all of the other things, that the day-to-day part of the operations. This is not somebody who would have that type of focus at all. So, two very clearly delineated roles that these two players would have. And then, the principal would be the overseer to all of that and the feeding back, the creating of the vision. You know, we had talked about the fact that he would have regular, ongoing meetings with these assistant principals. So, you know, if, I really need to see if this even comes through as to whether, how we would approach it on a regular basis thereafter with the principal.
Okay. Other questions?
Is it conceivable if the role of the. Is it conceivable if the role of the department chair was shifted, perhaps coming to a different bargaining group, so that they had genuine supervisory authority, that some of this hypothetically, over time, might be of some kind...
There's not a lot of support for that thinking right now, to be honest with you. And I would say that came through very clearly in my discussions with the staff. For a myriad of reasons. It's a great question.
Anything else? So, it's on here for a requested vote. Do you want to, someone want to make a motion?
I want that we authorize the superintendent to advertise and the principal to hire and the assistant principal of academics at the Shogun Regional High School.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I would like to...
Yep.
...potential, I'll admit to that. And that it be funded neutrally. In other words, this is not more, this is just, you're gonna have to...
You can't, yeah, we would, that is how it has to be.
Yeah, that is how it has to be.
We have to go back to the dollars. So we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, because, yeah, no. And that's exactly, that was the discussion that was happening here, is to make sure that it has to be inside of that budget.
Anything else? All those in favor? And all those opposed? One, the motion passes. Okay. The next item is a facilities department vehicle purchase request. So if you want to tee this up, because...
Sure, I'll tee it up, and then I'm gonna turn it right over to Pat. So we talked, again, one of the other needs that we have is we've got an aging fleet of vehicles that are out there, and a couple that are in particularly bad shape right now. And Pat had come to you, I think, two meetings ago, and suggested that, you know what? If, I'm projecting this as a residual from the, you know, surplus from this year. Although, to be honest with you, I wasn't sure if we'd have any surplus, quite frankly, coming out of this year. But she said, if there, if we find that we have a surplus, and anything above that, if there's a little bit above that surplus, then I would like to be able to come back to the school committee and ask for the purchase of a vehicle. And so we're waiting, and here we are now, basically, the second to last week, almost the last week of June. And she's been pulling the numbers together and saying, you know what? I think we have what we need to do this. So we bring this notion forward. We have, we have two vehicles in particular that we've got grave concerns about. One is our electrician's van, which is just rotting out underneath in the undercarriage. And I'll let Pat speak, we'll speak to that. And I think you're gonna go through a number of the vehicles on the fleet tonight, aren't you, not Pat? And kind of talk about them?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about them.
Yeah, and we'll just go through this very quickly, and then, and then slow us down a few, because we feel that, we've already talked this through with you, but we'll go through again and just highlight a couple of things. So Pat?
Okay. So, next one.
So I propose the purchase of a new utility van. And this would be to replace the van that's currently being used by the electrician. And I would first like to say that the electrician is basically the guy that is overseeing most of the jobs in the district, along with the facilities. He's like his right-hand man. And so he, not only does he do electrical work in the district, but he is also, he does, oversees HVAC, and identifies plumbing and issues, and helps the facilities director to make determinations. So, like I said, this is the most heavily-used vehicle in the district. The existing van frame is rotting. It's questionable as to whether it will pass inspection. The doors, because of the rot, aren't closing properly. The maintenance costs have increased significantly. There's only sixty-eight thousand miles on this, but I have to tell you that driving a vehicle a smaller amount of miles for short periods of time puts much more wear and tear on a vehicle than highway driving. So I propose that we purchase a new van. We went out onto the COMBI site for the state. And I'd like to tell you that the state, let me just explain a little bit about what COMBI is. It's a vehicle that the state has made available to all the communities and to the school districts to purchase many things across the board. Anything from construction to purchase of vehicles. And we went onto the site, and we got three quotes from three different, for three different vans. And this particular van that we chose was thirty-one thousand dollars, and includes ladder racks and all the accessories necessary, as what the existing van has. Going forward, this, this actually meets all of our requirements, so...
Is this in the budget?
This is not in the budget. But the reason why I'm at the end asking you this is because we wanted to make sure that we had money for everything, all the other items in the budget, right through year-end. And that's why I'm coming at the last minute to you. Because I really wouldn't feel right about spending this money on this without knowing that we have at least enough to do this. And it's critical. I have to say it's critical.
But we do have money in the budget for a vehicle, right?
We have, yes, for money. We used money to pay off the debt on another vehicle, but we do have some money left in one of our contract service lines that we can use for this.
But what about the snowplow that we...
Well, I'm moving on to that.
Yeah, I'm moving pretty quick here.
Okay. So there's an old pickup truck at Stowe that we can't really leave the site right now. It's a 1993, and it won't pass inspection, so we're going to put it up for disposition as surplus. The existing plumbing and electrician vans, we're kind of going to take some parts from one, move to the other. And it will be used to transport lunches between the buildings here in Bolton. This, by using one of these vans to transport, it will free up the truck with the plow on it. The Emerson pickup truck, which is the truck with the plow, will then be moved to the high school for use by the grounds crew. The vehicle is currently being used to transport lunches, like I said. This will also help with moving equipment across the district, the landscaping trailers. Right now, we have the one heavy-duty pickup truck that has to bring the equipment with the lawnmowers to one place, drop it off, and then go up and, you know, drop somebody off over there, and then go back and pick them up. So they spend a lot of time going up, up and down 117. So, and then it could be used for plumbing, for small, not for plumbing, for plowing in an emergency, you know, for small pieces of, you know, area that needed to be taken care of. And for the future, we would like to be on a plan in which we replace at least one vehicle a year. Hopefully, next year, maybe we'll be in the same position where, because of efficiencies that we found in the budget, that maybe we can purchase another vehicle. We have an aging fleet.
Before I start, somebody better jump in.
Is this, so are you saying this will be purchased with FY17 funds?
Yes.
Okay. So that's one question. I have another question. In the end of March, there was $229,327 in the custodial revolving account. And for FY17, when we were planning the FY16 or 17 budget, I recall that we transferred money out of that to do an offset. And then, not similarly, but there we were told in November of 2016 that we needed to buy two lawnmowers, and that alone was taken out for those. My point being that there appeared to have been money in that revolving account that could have covered the cost for those. So here's my real question.
Okay.
How much money is in that account now? And could that money be used for some of this?
Well, for fiscal year 18, we've allocated funds from there. There are funds that, there are expenditures that are coming out of that revolving fund.
Okay.
And, and that has been addressed. I think we've talked about that extensively. I've talked to finance committee about that. And that was the plan, to make sure that that revolving fund doesn't grow, that the money is being used to offset expenditures in the budget.
So if this money from FY17 is not used to purchase the new, the van for thirty-one thousand dollars, where, what will happen to that?
It will go to E and D.
Mark?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we were actually going to use more in the custodial fund than was coming in. So we're planning in next year, actually reducing the balance a little bit in order to undertake some of the operations of the school. So it's not as if that money is, for next year, sitting there. We're actually drawing down the fund a little bit, by plan.
For one-time expenses?
I don't recall exactly. I think there's some operations and some one-time. It's a continuing revenue source, in the sense of rentals of buildings or otherwise. So there's a little bit of, there's income, and there's a good reason to have operational outgo.
And some of the debt for the field comes out of that. And that, I think, has been, it's been that way for a few years.
So what are you asking for?
I'm asking for approval to purchase a piece of equipment that's expensive, a thirty-one thousand dollar van for our facilities department.
From FY17 funds?
From fiscal year 17 funds.
Oh.
Right here, right now.
Right now.
That's why it's in this month right now.
If this vehicle or another vehicle comparable to it fails, what kind of trouble causes everybody when you don't have the vehicle you need in hand, which you're, I assume, worried about?
Well, we know that one of them will possibly fail inspection, so we'll be down to one van. So if that one van breaks down, then we will be in trouble. I mean, using it between the schools, just to bring the lunches back and forth, is fine. But as far as using it, it's not, it's not streetworthy. And I don't think it's worth the money to put any more money into this vehicle.
What is, what are your, what are your annual expenses for maintenance on that?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, there was at least twelve hundred dollars put into the electrician's van, and it's still not up to what it needs to be. The plumbing van, we haven't done anything to. It's at, since last...
So...
And that's worse than the...
I mean, I get the need, and it's like, you don't want to hand tie somebody to be able to do the job that we need the electrician to do, but all this off-cycle stuff, and you and I have talked about this, just makes me so nervous.
Well, I mean, you can, you can decide to put this into E and D if you want, if that's, if that's your last little bit of money, or you put this into the van.
But that's not the point. The point isn't just shove it into E and D. The point is, it's just more unexpected expense. And, and I get that, but like, if you're gonna come to us in the fall and say, now we need another vehicle, or we need another this, was it in the budget? No, it wasn't in the budget. It's like, and I get it, because you're just like, finding all of these things that... I know, she's looking at me like, yeah! Well, you gotta put that up there!
We used the van more than we needed the two lawnmowers.
Yeah, but that's water under the bridge!
I know that, I know that. But to me, it makes a difference that it's FY17 funds, it's, and the money if you use it.
Right. That's not my point, though. My point is, yes, I get the FY17, I get it. But like, like, you know, if you need a vehicle every year, then build it into the long-term budget instead of...
And we do.
We have another one! We're gonna win our ding ding ding!
But that's exactly what this is. And that's, you know, we, we talked about it this morning. This is the plan. There needs to be an evergreen plan in place. And that's exactly what we're coming with, is saying, listen, we want to do one now where we've got the money. We need, we know we've been open about the plow truck, that that's coming right behind it. That's the next vehicle that we don't think is gonna pass the budget.
But that's not in the budget either, right?
Well, I think that we've got some money set in the budget to help support this moving forward. So this, this just happens that we've got this money right now, a little bit of extra above what we had projected. So we said, we probably should bring this to you right now, say, do you want us to go ahead and purchase it right now? It's a need.
What's the projection for the E and D? Now that we're at the end, they're at the end?
You can caveat it. Yeah, we're not gonna hate you for it.
How much roughly?
About four hundred. Going into, going in, in addition to the 1.7 that's in there.
Really?
A million dollars comes out.
Are we taking any out of that?
So we're taking a million.
Next year, we'll take a million out next year.
So we got, so four from this year, and we'll have seven left over.
Right.
So facility, one million after, at July 1st.
We'll have 700,000, we'll add 400 to that, so we'll have over a million.
Right.
That'll be the bottom line.
Okay. Others? Okay. Is anybody, does anybody else have any more conversation you guys want to share?
I would just like to say, I think it's strategic to not get into trouble on our vehicles.
Right.
And I think it's money well-spent to possibly even save labor to have a working vehicle. And I recognize that it's not necessarily an intended, a wish-for expense, but I think it's come to necessary and could be a savings by having the vehicle working when you need it most. So in that sense, I'm favorably inclined to...
The only thing that I can even wrap my head around is it's coming out FY17.
Yeah. All right, anyone else?
I agree. I think it'll cost more in the long run if we wait until it blows up.
Yeah.
Or figuratively, one of those two, but, you know, than to do it now. But I would like to see, you know, that we, like you guys said, that we really start to plan for and say, okay, this one is not so good, this one maybe got another couple of years on it, let's start to really make sure we're including that in our long-term planning.
Yep.
And that would be, that'd be a welcome addition.
Yes. And that's what we're really, that's what we're working towards right now.
All right. Are you gonna ask for something else?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted you to know.
I hope I can live through it.
I just want you to also know that we are assessing, that all the vehicles are being assessed and maintained by the grounds department. I mean, that is one of their primary responsibilities now. So they make sure that the inspections are done. They schedule the repairs, so there's preventive maintenance being done. And that, that's why we can come up with this plan today.
And I think that's really important to note, to the school committee, because this is one of those, when we peel back the onions, this is something that was not there. This is a new system that's in place that is working very well, which is why we're now here tonight.
Right. Okay.
So it's part of your conversation, is that you're saying we do have another vehicle that is not in the best of shape, and there's a possible conversation next year, depending on how things go.
All right. So let's move this forward. Does someone want to make a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the allocation of thirty-one thousand dollars to purchase a...
From FY...
From FY17, to purchase a van for the district electrician.
All right, do it in a second.
Second.
Thanks, Elise. Any more conversation? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
You had to work for that one, huh?
I did, and that's okay.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move quick. Oh, actually, maybe not. Okay, great. All right. So I'm gonna turn the next item over to the superintendent, approval for the interim business manager, 2017-18 contract.
Yeah, this is... Yeah, this is just simply because the school committee oversees the, the contract for the superintendent and oversees the contract of the business manager. And it's been, I think it's the other one.
Sped and the school nurse.
Yeah. So this is just coming forward because Pat had a one-year contract last year, and so all I'm doing is moving forward that we do another one-year contract for her this year. So that's, that's what I'm bringing forward to.
I, I have no issue with it, and I just wanted, to Pat, you stepped up to the plate in a big, big way. From being a senior accountant to stepping into some pretty big shoes, living through a forensic audit and having every process that was here completely ripped apart, refocused, best practices put in place, reporting structures that we never had, that we really need being put in place. Even coming to us today, even though it makes, gives me agita to understand this, knowing that you're starting to plan, we can start to see a three to five-year plan maybe start to be developed, so our towns know what's coming, why it's coming. And I really appreciate the work and just encourage you to keep looking for those opportunities for us, but I really appreciate it.
I would say too, I, I just want to spring from your, your thinking too. When I take a look at, at growth, I mean, I think that Pat has been amazing this year. She's been, she's shown great leadership, she's a great team member, she's a great thought partner for me. Both she and Anne Marie are in my office at least once a day, if not maybe four or five times, depending on what's happening. And I'm so appreciative of the skillset that Pat has brought. And you're right, and I think, again, I think some very courageous leadership this year and some, some tough times and some tough discussions, and she stepped up to the plate every single time. So I, I just want to give her all the kudos in the world. So I fully support the notion that we give her an additional contract.
Comments, questions?
Just thank you for all you've done.
Yep. Really appreciate that. Can I get a motion?
I move.
What's the, what are you moving?
I'm moving that we approve, approve the superintendent to go forward with the contract for the interim business manager.
Thank you. And is that in, is that contract online?
I don't know if it's online.
It is.
It's in the packet, thank you.
It was in the packet.
Okay, so according to the salary and the terms and the, in the, uh, judge, or judge description. All right, thank you. Second from Kathy. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Pat, thank you so much. Consent agenda, unless there's some issue with the June 7th, June 21st meeting minutes, we assume they're approved. However, I do want to mention, Alita brought something to my attention today. Since we won't be meeting regularly through the summer months, we do need to vote, and Steve, you can move this one. We do need to vote to allow the budget and warrant subcommittee or other members in their absence of the school committee to sign the warrants through the summer so folks can get paid.
Yeah. Which is a normal thing that happens every year.
Yeah, because we don't have the full meetings. So if someone wants to move that, and I'll take a second. Steve, let's move it.
I'll do it.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? Elise, thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments? Just with respect to this, just, just don't be surprised if you check your emails, please, because we may be having to pull a quick meeting together. All those in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. All right, Alita, thank you for the heads up on that. And at this point, I think we have concluded our regular business. We will be going into a very quick executive session.
Do you want me to make the motion?
I would, I was just going to ask if someone would make the motion.
Okay. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter 38, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining of units A and C if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. The school committee will not reconvene to open session.
And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. And Kathy, you want to do roll call?
Lorraine?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone.